An LRC, Learning Resource Center, which is what the kids call libraries now. Most of us know libraries with stacks. Kids nowadays don't necessarily use stacks. So there's a LRC, a Learning Resource Center. A student government area, breakout spaces for students to study, office spaces. And then those yellow classrooms to the right-hand side are your labs. So your wet and your dry labs for biology and for chemistry. Next. So here's the entrance to the campus or to the building. So you exit your vehicle, you exit the bus, whatever it may be. And you'd come to the front of the classroom, very open, a lot of glass. You can kind of see through the building there to the backside. Very welcoming building, some cool architecture in the roof, which is part of the problem that we're having with DSA and our structural design is because of that. But it mimics the mountains behind the building. So but very welcoming native plants, as you can see here. Next. This is the central hub. You can see the welcome desk to your left. I'm not necessarily sure if that boat is going to be there. But the thought was always to have some sort of tie to the community with some historical information. We've talked to the Historical Society about possibly having some areas to be able to put some historical items from the community in the building. Cafe behind there in purple, again, very open. You can, one of the cool things is you can see the gavel and bird there in the skylight. So as the day moves along, that will move as a shadow on the ground. Next. This is community room. So this is an example of what it could be used for. This is a community fair that has it set up for that. As many people know, with the epicenter now, at least there's one space to be able to have some larger events, but that's really all there is in town. So this will give the community another location to be able to have some large meeting space where that we don't have right now. It can be used for, again, it can be used for a job fair like this. The board could have their meetings there. It could also be used as a large lecture room. The classrooms that we have that are there are there for between 35 and 49 students. This could have, this is a larger space, like 2,200 square feet. It could have, it could be a larger lecture space if needed. Next. This is the LRC I talked about, the Learning Resource Center. Kind of a breakout space, quiet space for students to be able to have, to study, to have group meetings, to be able to get resources. They will have some resources there. We're not exactly sure what that's going to be yet. We're, one of the things that we need to do is talk to the librarian staff to find out what that's going to be. But a great space, you can kind of see the south, those windows face the south. You know, a lot of natural light for the students to be in a very nice welcoming space. Next. Science labs, which we talked about, and the reason why this is in here, it just shows the flexibility of the building. Who's the, who's to say how you're going to teach labs in 20 years? The infrastructure is all in the walls or comes from up above? All those, those tables, desks that are there are all on casters and can be moved around. So there's a lot of flexibility in the space for today and for tomorrow, which is really the way that we design buildings now for flexibility. If you've ever done a renovation of a building, concrete is hard to, it's hard to move. So we try our best to have flexible spaces. So it's your science lab. Next. This is the hub from the exterior. So this is an outdoor space for students to be able to study out there, to be able to have classes out there, to be able to do a number of things. There can be, they, there's talks of having performances out there. If you're using the community's, the room, the community room is in essence to the left of that. They, there's ways to get out into that outdoor space for people to be outside. You know, it's recently, the weather hasn't been very nice, but typically we have pretty nice weather here most of the year. Next. So here's a view from looking north. So you can, in the middle is that outdoor hub we just talked about. To the left is community room. To the right is, is inside space, the LRC and the cafe space. So, you know, the trees, it's going to take some time to, to get that mature, but they're all going to be native, they'll all be native plants and trees in those spaces. So that's your, that's the south terrace. Next. And here's a view again from looking north as well. You can kind of see the mountains behind it and the way the building kind of mimics those mountains behind it. So, so that's the presentation. Are there, are there any questions from anyone?
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Resendez?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Mr. Feliz. Last time you were here, I remember you presented with a gentleman named Billy. It was my knowledge then that you were looking for his development to help fund the city sewer services. What happened to Billy's project?
Well, I was not here with Bill Lee the last time we were here.
Okay, so maybe the time previous to that?
I've never been, I've never presented with Bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did support that project. So I think Rose Cisapeta, my PIO, made a statement in support of that project.
And you had an agreement signed with the developer?
No, 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 that was just in support of his project.
Okay.
Because he has the fire exit.
He has a secondary access point.
That would benefit our project, yeah.
Okay. Do you remember how many houses that project was?
I have no idea about any of the number of houses in either of the projects.
Okay. It's my understanding that the project was denied by the county recently because of the impacts that it would have on our traffic, already existing traffic congestion. So I'm surprised to hear that you're now partnered with Dividend Homes to help pay for your sewer. Do you know how many houses that development is going to have?
I do not. I know it's north of 100, but I don't know that number.
Okay. And then I'm a little bit confused about why, if you're planning on having hookup to city sewer services, why would you even bother putting in septic tanks?
We don't have the authorization by the city right now to be able to put in the sewer.
Okay. And then I would imagine Dividend Homes doesn't either.
No.
Okay. So this sounds a bit concerning to me. I'm all for having a college and having it out there. But when we talk about attaching homes to that, that's going to create already more, even more impacts to our infrastructure that's suffering. So I do support the college. And last time I was under the understanding that you were going to do septic tank, maybe possibly in the future. But I would not support your project or any other project if there was going to be more development at this time. That's what's called leapfrog development. And I'm of the mindset that we should not be building homes past Buena Vista, past Fairview, past Union, outside of the city's jurisdiction. We're already a city that is impacted, heavily impacted. We're growing too, too quickly. We can't keep up with the demands of our infrastructure. Our schools, our parks, our roads are suffering. The quality of a life of our citizens are suffering.
Councilmember Point of Order, we're getting a little off topic. We're talking about Gavlin College. We're not talking about other developments right now.
Thank you. If I can just make one more statement, Madam Mayor. This is why elections matter. What is happening now is a result of the people that you voted into office. The former mayor, Ignacio Velazquez, said that this was about development.
Can we stick with Gavlin?
And here we are today talking about hundreds of more homes coming into Gavlin College attached. So I support your project.
Councilmember Resendez.
But not at the cost of our residents. Thank you.
And that's understood. And, you know, we respect your opinion. I think we're not here to advocate for, for that. I think we're here to explain why we're doing septic. And we're here to also let you know that there is an option to go sewage. So there is a developer that's willing to pay for it. If that's not an option, then there's got to be some other option. Otherwise, we can't do sewage. So we're not here to advocate for either or. We're just telling you what the options are.
And I fully support the septic option only. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Has the Dividend Homes project been approved by the county at this point? Has it gone through the different levels of review and has it been approved?
To be honest, I'm consulting to GAV and do not know what dividend has and does not have. I know that, I think they have a tentative map. But as far as project approval, I don't, I think they still need county approval. But please don't quote me on that because I'm unaware of what that project is, where they're at with that.
Okay. I have some concerns that Councilmember Resendez has as well. What, what is the cost to put septic in as currently proposed?
It's about a half a million dollars.
About a half a million dollars. And so, and do you have a sense what the cost to put the sewer in to connect would be?
It depends on if we're talking about going from GAV all the way through Cielo Vista to the backside of Roberts Ranch. It's, I would say a couple million dollars. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I apologize. But it's multiple millions of dollars. 1,400 lineal feet of directional bore sewer.
Okay. And so, excuse me. Do, if this council were to approve connecting to the city sewer, what would that half a million dollars be used for that you wouldn't have to spend on septic?
Yeah, that could, that could bring additional, it could increase the scope of our project on that campus. So, you know, we would, we would invest it back into that project.
Okay. And, and so I assume there's been a traffic impact study done on the college going in? And can you speak to that at all?
To what extent?
To how it's going to impact traffic, whether it be on the airline highway or whether it be on Fairview?
I don't know what the EIR states. I know that we went through, we went through CECL, went through an EIR. There's talk of a light going there in the future. I don't know. I think that light is tied to potentially dividend homes and possibly Gavlin if, you know, future phases happen, not with the current 35,000 square foot building.
Any sense, any forecast for how many students the campus will serve in the next, once it's, once it's open in the next two to five years?
Not yet. We're working on that right now. We have a retreat in April to do our scheduling forecast. And we'll tell you that we have about 1,500 students from Hollister that are either taking classes here or a lot of them are driving toward your white campus.
So they're here, they're in Hollister already, if I interpreted what you said correctly?
Correct. But we do know that a lot of our, not a lot, but some of our Hollister students are going to other colleges because the proximity to neighboring colleges is almost identical to their driving.
Sure. I mean, they could easily head down to Salinas.
Right. We want to keep them here.
Right. I couldn't agree more with you. City manager, how would, how would impact fees be determined for? I don't know. First of all, is the college exempt from them? And if so, how, if they're not, I'd like to know that. And then the final piece is it's hard to forecast not knowing where dividend homes is in their approval processes with the county. But how would, how would that be assessed?
Staff would have to research that and get back to you. I'm not prepared to give you that answer this evening.
All right, thank you. So I will say I'm 100% supportive of city connection. And so, and frankly, the last time you were here, I supported that as well at that time. But I would like to know more of the specifics. And, and so I am concerned that if dividend homes hasn't been approved, it's my understanding that Mr. Lee's project was denied. And so if, if the dividend home project isn't already approved or gets denied, where does that leave you? It's, my sense is that it puts you back to septic no matter what, so.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So thank you for your answers. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation again. I support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morales. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for being here. And thank you for providing us the information. I think 1,500 plus students that don't have to travel, that don't need to contribute to the roads or, or put their lives in jeopardy in terms of any type of car accidents is going to be beneficial to our community. Plus just being able to access higher education for our youth is just wonderful. So thank you for the work. And it sounds like you've thought about Plan A and Plan B. And either way, the college will be built and we're looking forward to the college opening. So thank you so much.
Yeah, that is the goal. We are committed to delivering this project, this community.
Okay. Well, thank you. I echo what Councilmember Morales said. I'm excited to see the campus finally be built after all these years. And I have to say, I love the design. It's a very natural and organic feeling blends into our community. So I'm excited to see the groundbreaking and yeah, look forward to seeing more. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And as soon as we have a date, I'll share the date with all of you and you're all invited to come and be part of our groundbreaking. And I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing. The last slide has my contact info. If anyone ever wants to take a tour out there or, or go see construction while it's happening, feel free to call, ask questions, or I can take you guys out there. So just let me know. I'm, my office is two minutes from the site, so I'm sure I'll be out there a lot. So if anyone has questions or wants to go out, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Mayor Casey, no, we do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay. So let's move on to consent then. Would any members of the council or members of the public like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Mayor Casey, City Clerk Jennifer Woodward, just to announce that the versions of the minutes that were included in the packet were not the finalized versions. The system didn't pick up the right version. So there are several typos that we've noticed in them. So if you'd like, they are all fairly minor. I will note that on the March 20th version of the minutes, the wrong speaker is listed for the Hollister Downtown Association. It states that it's Terry Escondilla, but it should be Breed Tavoris. All of the typers are fairly minor, so those can be corrected administratively or council can continue those to a later meeting.
Okay. Is there a will of the council to just accept it with the changes? Okay. All right. All right. So does anyone want to pull any items then?
Madam Mayor. Thank you. Item A4, please.
Any others? And no public comment, correct?
There are no public comments.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item four?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries four zero. All right. And then let's move to item four, the resolution of the city council approving the City of Hollister General Plan Progress Report. Councilmember Resendez, do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just, I think this is a very important item and I wanted to pull it to the public and have a chance to talk about it. I know we're going to talk about it later on in the meeting. And I do have some questions. If you could just give us a brief summary of an update of what's going on with the general plan?
So this item, A4, is the annual general plan progress report as well as the annual housing element progress report that's required by the state to be submitted to the state, both the Office of Planning and Research as well as the Housing and Community Development Department of the state. And it is a report on the progress of the 2005-2023 current general plan and all of the policies and implementation measures that were put into that plan. So it just goes over the progress that we've made on all of the different elements of our general plan as well as the housing specifically has its own kind of format. It goes over the policies as well as the numbers of housing units that were entitled and approved and building permits that were issued for those, for the year.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Speaking of the progress of the general plan, where are we and what are the next steps of the general plan?
Councilmember Resendez, we're going to have an item coming up on a next item. Well, not next, but later in the agenda where we'll be going over the update for the, for the general plan. So this item is just to accept the progress report for the last year. And then we will have an item where we go over the timeline, the status of the update and everything coming up later in the, in the agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. Will this progress report be posted online? Or how will the community become aware of where we're at in regards to this?
I can absolutely have it posted online to the planning page.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comment? Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Madam Mayor, I think we have to take public comment on this item.
Oh, yes, we do.
Yeah. Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Four zero. Thank you. All right. So this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the clerk before speaking. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining via Zoom using a cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker is limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note, state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items that are not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Mayor Casey, yes. Our first public comment is from Rob Rodriguez. Mayor Casey, yes. Our first public comment is from Rob Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone. For those that don't know me, my name is Rob Rodriguez. I'm here today as a representative of the Vista Park Hill Community Gardens and of the community of Hollister at large to speak out against the use of chemical poisons on grass and wild growing plants. My issues with the use of chemical poison is an issue that we should all have. It's not good for you and it's not good for your environment. To spray chemical poisons in a neighborhood or near parks is clear and willful disregard for the safety and health of our communities. Chemical poison was sprayed at Park Hill, Vista Park Hill on Tuesday, March twenty-eighth to combat wild growing grass. There were no warnings or signs posted in the neighborhood that saying the city would spray on that specific day, disregarding the safety of people in those neighborhoods that the city sprayed in, and especially those that have breathing issues. The chemical poison was sprayed on a day where heavy rain was forecasted, disregarding common sense, using smart use of city materials and the use of city money to pay employees to do something that nature would undo that same day. There was chemical poison sprayed in a garden labeled as pollinator habitat, disregarding the health of our environment and those natural systems that sustain the food production that our city and county are famous for. There's a few reasons why we have community gardens. A couple of them are to serve underprivileged communities who don't have yards of their own. And then also to serve underprivileged communities that don't have monetary access to organically grown food. So, you know, to spray these chemical poisons near community gardens where members are actively working pollutants out of the soil while trying to organically grow food for themselves and their families can only be seen as an attack against those people, their efforts and their health and well-being. I have a photo that I'm more than willing to share from Montana State University that shows that at just five parts per billion, herbicide kills plants, not just the grass like the city sprayed. So, tiny percentage of these chemical poisons can drastically affect the hours of work that people put in to grow their own food. I'm here today to ask the council to set up a formal process for any time these chemical poisons will be sprayed in any part of the community of Hollister. This process would include citizens being warned at least a week ahead of time that the chemical poisons will be sprayed and that if the city wanted to continue this outdated practice, they would search out only organically produced herbicides and put them into use only in extreme cases, not in cases where weed eater would do just fine. Please take this into consideration. It's all good and well to have beautiful streets. That can be accomplished without spraying any kind of chemicals in our neighborhoods, near our parks where our children's play, or near our only community gardens. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Monica Abonse.
Good evening, council. My name is Monica Abonse. I'm the recycling coordinator for San Benito County Integrated Waste Management. I'm here tonight to invite you all to our annual Earth Day celebration. This is our biggest event of the year. We have over twenty booths that will be present. We have games. We will have an art gallery with the, with all of the recology art poster submissions. We will be announcing the fifteen recology art poster contest winners. We usually switch the event between San Juan Bautista and Hollister, so we will be having the event in downtown Hollister this year between Sixth and Seventh Street. Thank you all for approving the road closure during the previous meeting. The event will be on Saturday, April twenty-second, from eleven AM to two PM, and I really hope you all can join us. I brought flyers if anybody wants them, so I will leave them. I don't know where should I leave them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Casey, those are all of the public comments we have.
All right, thank you. So, let's move on to our reports. City, interim city manager, do you have a report?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Any trainings or conferences? Chief, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to add that we had an officer, Rudolph's one of our FTOs, attend CIT training, critical incident training as required, as well as six of our officers attended basic traffic collision hosted at the police department along with a lot of other law enforcement agencies. We were able to get six of them in there. And we currently have our, our MSOs at the Cape Conference, which is our evidence technicians that are over there receiving that instruction. And, and then one of our detectives is in the required interview and interrogation school at this point, and that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's move on to public hearing. Ordinance number twenty thirty-two, an ordinance of the city council, City of Hollister mending the municipal code relating to administrative citation hearing requests. May we have the staff report?
Hi, yes, ma- Mayor and council. So, my colleague, Rob Lamelli, worked on this ordinance revision, so he's here to talk about it.
Hello, council. This amendment to the ordinance was requested by council in response to the fact that the growing use of administrative citations in relation to other ordinances was leading to request for a form from code enforcement at a location that no longer existed. So, it was simply amended to provide the correct address or the correct location for code enforcement to allow for the public to be able to obtain a form in order to request a, a hearing in order to be able to appeal any administrative citations. There was also an amendment removing the actual address for City Hall. This was done simply so that if there were any move or change of address in the future, we wouldn't then have to go back in and change the ordinance at a future time.
Okay, do we have any questions, council? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this is strictly for code enforcement citations. Is that correct?
It's for administrative citations. So, any administrative citations, that code enforcement hands out. Those essentially, it's redirecting the public to be able to go to the police department where code enforcement is now located in order to get the, the form.
But this wouldn't apply to, let's say, campaign election laws that we have locally, correct?
There, I think what, what is being corrected is the address. It was previously, the address was when the code enforcement was at the fire department. And so, this is just a correction of an address where they get the forms that they want to appeal.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or? I just have quick comment. It's more about grammatical stuff. So, you, in some of the changes in the section A, you took out department. So, really, the, before code enforcement, there's a the that needs to come out to be grammatically correct. Also, so the address was taken out for code enforcement, but if we want people to go to the police department, should we include their address or not?
We, we didn't include the police department again for the same reason that we didn't include the address for City Hall.
That's my question. And then I just wanted to double check in section B. So, we're having them go to City Hall to get the request for hearing form as opposed to going to the police department for the form?
Correct. The, the way that the procedure was set up based on prior ordinances was that they would have to come to City Hall to get the form. They would fill it out and then they would turn in the form along with all additional documents to the police department for code enforcement.
Okay, all right. That's the only questions I have. Any, any others or? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is probably more of a city manager question. I, I would presume that this can all be done online as well and should be, whether it be on the PD website or the city website to just be user friendly. You know, our, our police department's quite a drive out and City Hall is certainly more convenient, but I think most people do these things online now.
That is correct, sir. It was just, some people still like to do it on paper, and so we wanted to make sure that the address listed was correct. But yes, there is an online option.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, if there's no further council comment, I'll now open the public hearing on this item. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Mayor Casey, we do not have any public comments for this item.
I will now close the public hearing for this item. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries four zero. All right, so we're going to move on to item F one, resolution of the city council of the City of Hollister authorizing a temporary moratorium on traffic calming measures. Can we get the staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, at our last meeting, we had received consensus to, to pause traffic calming measures until staff was able to come back and present a traffic calming policy. And we'd also received consensus the meeting before, but there was a little bit of question to that. So, at the last meeting, we were asked to come forward and, and bring a resolution forward. So, ultimately, this is a resolution reflecting the direction of the council from the last meeting.
Great, thank you. Do we have questions from council? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I support the pause, but my understanding was that we were going to finish projects currently in progress. For example, Sunset, where there were still more speed humps to be installed. So, is my understanding accurate?
That is correct, sir. So, there was two areas of Sunset and two areas of Rustic that had been previously approved through the studies and were in the process of being installed.
Perfect, thank you. That concludes my question, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Morales?
So, I just want to clarify because the resolution says new. So, I thought we talked about traffic calming measures that were, that had not started. So, if they were studied and there was recommendations to, to do something about it, but they haven't started and we don't understand like what the budgetary impacts are, that we were going to hold on that. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, the ones that were polled a few meetings ago, those were not approved. So, those are technically not on the books to move forward, whereas these other ones that I just mentioned were actually, you know, the crew was halfway through Sunset and then stopped.
Thank you. Are you done? Sorry. Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, so just to refresh my memory, we, we don't actually have a policy. We have like an informal policy and then, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then what does that informal policy look like?
So, the informal policy would be that a resident reaches out and talks with the mayor or their council member. Sometimes they, they reach out to staff because they're not sure where to reach out. We would look up where their address is and redirect them to their council member. If the council member requests that study to be done, we would add it to a list. Typically, once a month, we're gathering those to get to economies of scale. Add all of the studies or the streets that were part of the study. We'd work with our traffic consultant, Kim Lee Horn, to study those, those roads. They would come back and make a recommendation. If they were warranted, then we would put them on the schedule for our community services department to go ahead and install if the study warranted it.
How many projects do we have in the pipeline, so to speak? Including the two traffic calming with the two major roads?
So, we have the two sets of speed humps that I spoke to earlier. That's finishing Sunset and then two sets on Rustic. And then we had brought Avenida Seser Chavez back for discussion along with Memorial Drive. And those were the ones that were, were pulled. And so, those are sitting in limbo. Those were initial sketches and concepts. Had those been approved at that meeting, then we work with Kim Lee Horn to actually sketch out and design those projects and come out with an estimate. At that point, we would come back, bring the estimate forward for discussion, and if approved, then we put it out to bid. If it goes out to bid, ultimately, if we get a qualified bidder, we would come back with the contract and ultimate, ultimately seek approval to proceed with the project.
So, for the ones that are sitting in limbo, we're going to finish those ones that have been requested and that actually need the speed humps. We're going to finish those ones?
Those were the two on Sunset and the two on Rustic. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, but up until then, then we're not going to have any more, we're not going to be able to take any more requests for any more speed humps or traffic calming measures until we come up with a new policy.
That is how staff understood it and drafted the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I just want to clarify because I've, from questions, so the only thing we're talking about moving forward are things that are in construction right now that are installations going on, those two streets that you mentioned for speed humps, right? That is it. We're not doing other projects at this moment.
Yeah, the other projects were not approved.
So, we were not moving forward on those. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. All right, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor Casey. Our first public comment is from Jose Martinez.
Good evening. Just a couple of comments. We are in a street that has approximately seven, possibly eight bumps. And our location, specifically the south end of Powell, seems to be working well given where the majority of pedestrian traffic is. Also, neighbors seem to think that it's a good thing. I don't like them, but I know it's a good thing. It's like taxes, right? You know it's going to do some, some good. But I think it's, it's also, it's also important to note that, given the, the amount of traffic in the ancillary streets, the other streets, those seem to have increased. Okay, so we might take care of it here, but you have more traffic elsewhere. Building more, you know, humps, bumps, speed tables, whatever you want to call them, may address, you know, a small percentage of people that like to drive fast, usually younger. I don't want to paint them all, you know, with a broad stroke, but certainly it causes concern for elderly, me included, and the ability to, those students that cross, because we're close to a high school. You know, they're not paying attention to what's going on, you know, as they're walking. They're looking at their phone. They're listening to music. They're gabbing and they're jaywalking. So, I think it's important to have them, you know, the larger streets, I think, are able to, you know, maintain a, a good traffic flow. And we, you know, as residents, we go to like Monterey Street to avoid a lot of those, and it's, it's important. You know, there's cost, I understand, but those are my observations. I think, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a necessary evil, if you will, you know. My mechanic may think otherwise. I, I don't know, you know, he wants to be, you know, seeing me come in. But anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next public comment is from Violetta Nagreet.
Hello. I actually, I am also for the whole speed humps and all that. I actually live off of Santa Ana Road and I've had four vehicles, two of which have been, been considered a total loss because of reckless driving, careless people who are just speeding. And I understand that they did place two speed humps on the road, but it does not resolve the issue. It's just causing people to slow down before the hump and then they take off. And then they're utilizing Alvarado Street because I live in the corner of Alvarado. Yeah, I have people doing burnouts on that road all the time. I've addressed it to the officers. Every single time there's been vehicle damages. I recently had a vehicle who was involved in a hit and run. Later on in that night, there was another accident a block away from my house, right next to the speed hump. So, I, I'm for it and I just, I need help because I am right now at a loss in over fifteen thousand dollars in vehicle damages. And it's, I feel like I'm just working for it. I can't just buy another car, buy another car because my insurance, it gets to the point where my insurance is, they're not going to cover. And who's going to help? I feel like I'm, I'm completely always at a loss. We had a drunk driver who last, last February hit two of my vehicles and hit one of the light poles on the McCarthy Park. I'm still waiting for the insurance to settle, so I'm just like one of those citizens who's, what about me? What about me? I just, I, I feel like I need help from the city at this point to try to make traffic better. I know a lot of my neighbors don't like the speed humps that are there, but I don't think they're enough. That's all.
Thank you.
The next public comment is on Zoom and is from Miguel Solerzano.
Good.
Good evening, council. My name is Miguel Solarzano. I live at nine five eight West Street here in Hollister. I've lived in this address for nearly 12 years. I've seen your city grow. Sometimes the growth is not always good. Ever since you guys have remodeled downtown, made it a one-way street, everybody's looking to cut through, find the fastest way to get home. And they use West Street as that street. West Street doesn't have a stop sign from Seventh Street all the way down to, I believe, to Seventh, to C Street, to the high school. You get a bunch of teenagers, not just teenagers, it's a lot of people who just catch speed, you know? And I have kids going to the high school, and there is no crosswalks. There is no speed bumps between those areas. And at what cost is that going to, when are you guys going to take care of that? Are you guys going to wait for a kid to get hit, for you guys to do something about it? Like I said, I've lived here for the last 12 years and the street has gotten worse. Sometimes when I get home from work, I can't even get out of my car from the car speeding so fast. My wife in the morning, when she leaves to work, she can't even get out of the driveway for the same reason. Cars just passing by super fast. I myself drive a fast car and, you know, I just don't think that all these kids, you have all this power to be able just to fly up and down the street. And, you know, I would really appreciate if you guys would be able to do something about this because we really need it. Sometimes I, I'm out in the street and I see these cars pass by and I raise my hands at them, you know, and trying to have them slow down because I'm outside with my kids. People just pass by, they'll flip me off, or they'll wave their hands back, but they don't care. They just keep doing it over and over. And, you know, we got to do something about this. I don't understand how we live, we live right down the street from my high school. We live right down the street from a park, and there's a preschool in between there too, in the corner of South. And, you know, there's always kids walking and there's nothing being done. And that's all I got to say. And I'm up for you guys doing, you know, speed bumps or speed humps on my street. I don't mind it at all. Yeah, it might take a little bit longer, but at least it's going to be safe for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are all the public comments we have for this item.
All right. So do we have any discussion or deliberation? Councilmember Burns?
Mayor Casey, sorry, somebody just raised their hand. Michael McAbey? You can unmute and you do have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. My name is Michael McAbey and I live on Prune Street. And all our neighbors that I've talked to are excited about the speed bumps that have been installed. It has decreased the speed limit from, I'm assuming it was an average of thirty-five when they're approved. And I can see with it, they're down to twenty-five, probably the posted speed limit on Prune Street. And the question I have is, I understand there have been some complaints about the speed humps. Are most of those complaints from people that don't live on streets that are affected by speeders, but still have to use those other streets, that they are, whether commuting into town or out of town? Do you have a figure on whether those complaints are generated from people that don't have speeding issues on their streets and are only complaining because they have to use those streets to have speed bumps? And I thank you, I thank you very much for installing them on Prune Street. And I hope our city becomes more safe with the additional speed humps that hopefully will be installed and that will reduce the traffic in town. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Those are all the public comments we have. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. So, well, well, well. We seem to have heard a different perspective tonight than we have in the past. And so I did want to ask and understand that we're going to hit pause on this, but does that mean when somebody contacts council or the city staff that we're simply going to say, sorry, we're not doing anything right now, get back to me? Or how are we going to deal with that? Because I still think there's value, we heard value tonight, that I think we need clarity on that because maybe we do go to some sort of a petition or a number of signatures that are required. I don't know where we're headed, but I don't want to turn people away in the meantime into interim. Also, I'm fine with extending it for things moving forward, as long as it's to a definitive date. One of the two streets, well, actually both, Avenida Cesar Chavez as well as Memorial, those are, those are in my district. And we know that we've had one young child, young man, as I recall, maybe twelve to fourteen, that was hit by a county transit vehicle and killed. And I want to see things move forward there. We've got an elementary school right there. It's a very wide road. As I recall, it's two lanes each direction. And I'm one that I'd rather invest more heavily in more hardscape versus taking that less expensive way. And I know that that costs money, but I am looking forward to it. But I don't want to have this conversation a year from now. I'd like to have some finality so we can move forward. I also think that, correct me, city staff, but my recollection is stop signs are not viewed as a traffic calming measure. Is that correct? And there's a study that goes along with those to see if they meet. And so I presume that that is outside the true scope of what we're talking about. So in the case where the gentleman was speaking about West Street, we could absolutely go out and see if they meet the formula for stop signs. And I would like to move forward with that. I'm really surprised if I understood him correctly, that there is like literally one stop sign as you turn left or right onto, whatever that, I'll, south. And so I think it would be helpful to take a look at that because, again, he said it, we don't need to have somebody hit. I also would ask why we don't have crosswalks? Because, again, if we've got kids crossing on a path to schools, crosswalks in my mind would be helpful. And then finally, while I'm supportive of hitting pause on some of this, I'd also ask that during that time, maybe we have some enhanced police enforcement. Sometimes, you know, what's disappointing is usually the people that get the tickets are the people that live in the neighborhoods. But maybe that'll send a message as well. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I'm of the mindset, if we have a policy in place, then we shouldn't replace the policy until we have a new existing policy. I don't really understand the rationale of pausing the traffic calming measures that are going on in the city. This is a good thing. Some people don't like them, they're ugly, but I think they're very necessary. And I think that some of the people that spoke today also said the same thing. I live over by the high school. I know that there's somebody in the audience that lives on West Street. How many times has the car been hit across the street from your house, on West Street, on that corner of West and Hayden? Two times recently? I drive by there every day. This is a necessary thing that we need to have. First and foremost, we need to ensure that the citizens of our city are safe. And if we want to look at revamping or revisiting or putting another policy in place, fine, I'm all for it. But let's do that when the time's right, and let's do that in collaboration, in partnership with our community. We're voted in by these people, and the people that spoke tonight came and spoke from all the different districts of the city. I'd like to hear what your experience has been. So please, continue to reach out. Thank you for coming tonight. Continue to let us know. And I don't support a pause because I think we need to, if anything, keep doing this, keep the policy open, keep the other two that were mentioned, Memorial and Avenida de Cesar Chavez, going. And then if we come up with a new policy, then let's replace it. We can't just stop an existing policy that the majority of this council did agree to previously. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales.
First, I want to thank everyone that spoke and showed up today, your voice. We hear your voice and we hear your concerns. I think where it's been challenging is that we all hear from our constituents about safety concerns, and we hear it from both sides. So at our last meeting, we also heard from other members of our community that if they have medical issues, the speed banks, speed bumps have a significant impact on the overall health and their pain. We've heard the damage on vehicles. We heard the impact that it does, that it has on first responders being able to access folks and the impact that it might have on their ability to recover in terms of the amount of time that it gets them from one place to another. And there's other factors in our community that we have to just make sure that we're aware of, you know, the hospital being one of them. And time is of essence. So we want to be able to make an informed decision. Also, at least I am concerned from a background of budget, it's understanding where this money is coming from. So for two projects, two traffic calming projects, we spent almost under two million dollars. And the cost of all these speed bumps, we haven't had an overarching analysis of the total impact that it has on our overall budget. The City of Hollister has about, operating budget from general fund, about forty million dollars. That's a, just for two projects, that's a significant amount of money out of our entire budget for, and yes, life, human life is extremely important. There's no value to that. But I think we need to have a pause to be able to understand all aspects and do a little bit more in terms of research. So listening to our community when we have traffic measures. Allowing people that can't get here on time, the ability to provide us with feedback, including surveys. Have our staff or even city council attend community meetings to understand the impact on these traffic calming measures or just the impact in terms of their livelihoods. And truly be able to create a policy that is fair and equitable for all of our residents and for all of their needs. And our responsibility is to make sure that your tax dollars are well spent. And that we're not looking at now, but look at a year from now and five years from now in terms of the overall impact.
Okay. So my thoughts, you know, we've spent close to two hundred thousand dollars just in traffic studies around speed humps. And that doesn't include the cost of the speed hump or the installation. We also, as Councilmember Morales said, we've spent millions on bigger traffic calming projects. So my concern is, you know, looking at some of the projects, you know, the data doesn't necessarily always support some of the measures taken. That some projects might not have qualified if we did have a actual policy in place. And I was surprised to learn that we don't have a formal policy. We have a very informal policy. And to me, having one person be able to trigger a traffic study that can cost thousands of dollars, I want to see a formal policy where you do a petition, where neighbors all get together and decide this is what they want, not one person. So I think that we do need a formal policy, and I was surprised to hear that. And actually, there had been one developed when this was discussed a year ago, and it was not adopted. And I don't know why that didn't happen, but we really do need to think more clearly about this. I agree with what Councilmember Morales said. Safety is paramount, but we also have to look at budget. We have to do this and plan it thoughtfully. And I feel like, you know, we're spending a great deal of money, a great deal of our budget, and it's not really accounted for. We don't have a budget item for speed humps or for traffic calming. And I noted that we've pulled from reserves for some of these projects. I just would really like us to be a little more thoughtful in how we go about it. So I totally support pausing, although I do agree with Councilmember Burns that I would like a set date when we could expect to see a policy come. We don't want to put things off forever, but I do think it's important enough that pausing for a while, even if we take in requests and put them on hold for a short time, they haven't had speed humps for years. Waiting a few months is not going to, you know, change things that much. So I, I also just wanted to talk about, one of the things that I've been doing a lot of studying of the different projects that we've had, and the one thing I keep hearing is about drag racing and about sideshows. And to me, that's not a neighborhood issue, that is a citywide issue. And I really would like to see us consider that separately and not as a part of a traffic calming for a particular neighborhood. Because every single one, you hear comments from people talking about it, it's everywhere. And so whether we do some kind of a, you know, joint task force with the sheriff and the police or look at ordinances around drag racing, or find some ways to support our officers so that we can actually do some enforcement. Because the neighborhood traffic management programs I've seen in other cities, they do three things. They don't just do engineering for streets. They do enforcement and they do education. So I, you know, that's the part that I would like us to be a little more thoughtful in how we're approaching this instead of deciding to do something and then trying to figure out where the money is going to come from. I do understand and want to see improvements in the streets and the incorporation of bike lanes and pedestrian facilities. They're important, but we do need to do a budget. And we, we know that you incur cost every time you just do a study. So those are things that I'd really like to make sure we're not spending money. I think half of the requests that came in in the last year were unwarranted. And, but we did spend money on doing studies for them. So that's, you know. I guess those are the main things. I would like to see this motion go forward. I understand some of the concerns, but I think as long as we could be guaranteed some kind of a timeframe. And city manager, do you have any concept of how long it might take to bring it back?
So we can start with the starting point of the policy that was brought forward last time and take it from there and put up some discussion points for you all to discuss. I did hear community meetings, that type of thing. If we go that route, that'll obviously add to the timeline. But we could certainly bring back, you know, we could base it off of what we did the last time, put it up for discussion and direction, and then bring a policy back in the next few meetings.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I just want to reiterate, the reason I'm not for this is if an accident were to occur from now that we don't have a policy, we're putting a pause on it up until the time that we do adopt a policy. I want it to be clear. I am totally against this. I would hate to see a member of our community, much less or much worse, sorry, a child get injured because we decided to pause this. And on that, I'm going to request that we do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I sense this is going to end in a two-two. And so I'd like to propose a compromise to move forward with the pause on the traffic calming, the big ticket items, and continue doing the minor traffic calming, as in speed bumps and other less expensive things. Because I just don't think you can put a price on people's safety. And sometimes I get why people don't like them. Personally, I drive either over three or four or one, depending on how I go home. And I understand that, but I'm not going to compromise. And what I don't want to do is kick this can down the road for weeks, if not months, and have regrets that I could prevent. So I'd like to make a motion to move it forward, but only to hit pause on the big ticket, the traffic calming, for example, on Memorial. And that would be my compromise. And candidly, if I can't get that support, I sense this is going to go down my two cents. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
I'd like to, if appropriate, ask our city attorney, if traffic calming measures or studies take several months and for some years, because I know some of my constituents have been waiting for at least a year or more for even the study, depending on staffing level or et cetera, or even the purchase of bumps once approved and warranted. Can you talk a little bit more about what Councilmember Resendez talked about, about liability? Because I can't imagine that the city would be responsible or liable for the driving habits of human beings.
Sure. So high level, these are going to be very factually intensive cases if and when the city were put in a position of being sued for an accident not having done a study or delayed on a study for potential speed humps or other traffic calming measures. That being said, we also can't control when and if people are going to bring a lawsuit. It's a difficult question to answer. There may be instances where the city is liable, there may be instances where the city isn't liable. It's just going to be factually intensive. So the answer is it depends.
Any other comments? Are we, do we have a motion at all to?
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay. So do we want to take a vote on the motion on the floor?
You need a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor? All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three-one. All right, we're going to move on to, I believe we are pulling item two from tonight's.
Staff is requesting to pull this item.
All right. So, we're going to skip item two, move on to item three, resolution of the City Council, City of Hollister amending the list of authorized full-time equivalent positions as included in fiscal year 2023 adopted budget. May we have the staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Casey Star, Administrative Services Director with the city here. What's presented to the council tonight is essentially an administrative cleanup of the current year authorized positions. As we went over at the previous city council meeting, coinciding with our adoption of the budget, there is a staffing plan and authorized number of full-time equivalent FTEs. And due to various changes, staff may come to the council with the recommended change. And that is what's before the council tonight. And a summary of those recommended changes are as follows. The change of a Support Services Assistant, one-two-three, or one-two senior, excuse me, to delete that classification, which is currently vacant, and in that place to add a executive assistant to the city manager. The second change is to remove a administrative assistant position, which is currently vacant in the police department, and add a administrative analyst, and that correction is a result of a typo, administrative error in our current budget. The next recommended change is removing a accounting manager position in the Administrative Services Department and adding a management analyst position. And the final recommended change is the addition of a new full-time equivalent position, so a new position in the classification of Senior Support Services Assistant. So, that net impact to the total authorized full-time equivalent positions is an addition of one. And as a note, that addition of the Senior Support Services Assistant in Admin Services will, in general, replace the need for temporary contracted work. And I'm here for any questions.
Do we have questions from council? Let's see. Do we have public comment?
Mayor Casey, we do not have any public comments for this item.
All right. Then is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries four-zero. We're going to move on to a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister to adopt a policy regarding council proclamations and certificates of recognition. May we have a staff report?
Counsel, this proclamation, or this resolution to bring forth a policy on proclamations is a result of council's request at the February 21st, 2023, meeting for a policy on this topic. And the attached policy outlines the process for which members of the public can request a proclamation, certificate of recognition, appreciation, or the like. The request would be that anyone who is requesting it would bring forward the information, how it might relate to the City of Hollister, and also to provide some information on it. Those items would then come forward to the council for review, and it can come either from staff, typically myself, or it may come, those requests may come directly to members of the council. Council can then make proclamations if they want it to bring forward, and then we would bring it forward as staff, similar to how we do now. And if council has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions, Councilmember Rosales?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question or concern about this. I think it's the very last paragraph it starts with, at the next available council meeting. Well, I just think that it's a bit redundant. If we're going to, if we're going to give the proclamation, I don't know if they necessarily all have to come to council. I think if we're going to have a good policy in place and we have the guidelines and the parameters set out, why can't you just make that decision administratively?
Ultimately, that's the will of the council. If the council wants to see the policy like that, that can be done.
I feel like the policy's pretty well laid out. And if we want to bring a proclamation, then we can request a proclamation. I just think that if we're going to have it twice, I just think, just to be more efficient, I would really like to strike the consensus part and bring it back to the council and give the staff the policy and follow the parameters, and then just bring the proclamation forward. And that way, even the public, the members of the public can come and ask for a proclamation. We can ask for it through you, but I don't know if it necessarily has to come to the council twice. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay. If I'm understanding correctly, so what you're saying is if staff believes that it was something that council would be okay with, we would bring it forward?
No. It says in the policy what the parameters would be, right?
Right.
And then excludes certain ones, and I forgot what that was. Also, the other thing, now that I'm thinking back about it, Ms. Woodworth, you said local, state, but there's no federal or, I mean, worldwide, like, we even recognize Ukraine. So, as long as, as long as it fits within the parameters of the policy, I just think it's redundant to come back to the council for consensus and then come back for the proclamation. I just think that you guys should be able to make that decision.
Okay. One quick, it also does say, or those that positively impact community and convey an affirmative message to residents will be considered. So, that kind of does that broader one.
Exactly.
So, I guess my question, and I don't know if I'm understanding, so you're saying that we receive the request and then we just bring it to you for a proclamation, or you give us consensus and we issue it without bringing it back to you?
You make the determination. Does it fit that parameter? If so, then bring it back for a proclamation.
Bring it on agenda. Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we have consensus then?
I think ultimately, if you just make a motion with that change, we can adopt the policy as such. That'll work for staff.
Sure. So, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2023-54 with the amendment that staff has the discretion of approving the proclamations administratively.
Can we have some more discussion?
Certainly.
So, I'd like some clarity, though. For example, when I come to council comments tonight, I've got three that I want to ask, and I know the policy's not in place right now. So, if I understand it clearly, council could still do this during their public comments and still achieve the same outcome based on the policy that we're proposing?
Councilmember, the way staff understands the motion that's on the table, it would be if staff feel that the request from the public or whomever meets the intent of the policy, that we would bring it forward for approval, rather than bringing it forward for consensus and then ultimately back for approval.
I got you. But so, with my example tonight, though, if this policy were in place, and I presume this policy, does it go in place immediately, or is it going place 30 days after, or does it come back for a second reading, or what's the deal on this? Does this become effective right here, right now?
It's based on a resolution, and resolutions, once approved, become effective.
Okay.
Immediately.
Okay. So, for my ignorance, I have three that, in council comments tonight. So, that would still go forward with the traditional consensus of council, or I think they're going to meet the current, or the new policy. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to make this happen and do it tonight, because I don't want to kick this can down the road further than I have to.
The way I understand the motion on the table is that staff could recommend, based on the request, but it wouldn't prohibit you from requesting at the end of the meeting, as been a current practice. And if you get consensus, then we'd move forward.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification, Mayor. I'm prepared to second the motion if there's not other conversation.
Councilmember Morales, did you have a comment or question?
I'm wondering, and I don't know if either of you have been here long enough, I don't know, if there are circumstances in which we have, it would be to our best interest to be neutral, and staff wouldn't have that information. So, based on the policy that we're trying to approve now, they would bring it back. And then, at what point does council have the opportunity to say, no, this would be inappropriate, or, so, if you're eliminating that process, I would imagine that if anybody would have an issue, including the public, when are they going to be able to say, hey, you shouldn't be doing this, this is inappropriate?
We would still ultimately bring it back in front of you for approval. Are you asking, are we getting an approval, and then coming back and doing the proclamation? Could you say no at that point?
The way I understand it, and I apologize if I'm not getting it, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Is staff would determine whether a proclamation is appropriate. They would bring the completed proclamation to the council for signature and presentation. And so, at what point does council or anyone in the community get to say, excuse me, this is inappropriate, we should not be doing this?
There wouldn't be an opportunity.
Wouldn't be. So, do we have any?
Those could be developed as regular agenda items, and you could vote on them, and then give the proclamation once the vote was approved.
At Councilmember Rosales.
How are we doing this now, though?
Currently, I have two actually tonight that I would bring to you and say, these are the two requests that I've received. If I have council consensus, then I would bring it back for the proclamation on the agenda. The only concern that I would raise that if it has not received council consensus, and there are concerns raised, since it wouldn't be raised until potentially the proclamation is being presented, those people would likely be here. And so, depending on what it may, it might be, create a little bit of a uncomfortable situation.
Yeah. But I don't remember us ever doing, I don't remember us ever bringing it before the council to approve it and then the proclamation.
So, typically, it's not necessarily approval, it's by consensus. So, during the staff reports, at the end of the agenda is when staff has brought forward proclamations.
Got it.
And then council has given consensus, and then it's come back on a later agenda.
Got it. Okay. So, that makes sense. So, they can do it during the staff report, and then if we'd like, we can do it during our informational report.
Absolutely.
The other thing was, now that we're on it, sorry, it was a 30-day that the public had to submit 30 days prior to the next council meeting. That's quite a long time. Can't we just do like 15 or the previous city council meeting?
So, part of the difficulty lies in the process for adding something to the agenda.
Got it.
And so, that's about two weeks out. And then also, so that if we need to research or work with the requesters, so that we have all the information we need.
Okay. Makes sense.
So, I'd like to withdraw my second. I appreciate Councilmember Rosales' intent, but I absolutely have concern that we're not going to have an opportunity for the public to weigh in. And I think that's part of the deal, too. And so, for that reason, I'm going to withdraw my second. Thank you.
Okay.
And now that I've made a mess of things, then I guess I will withdraw my motion as well and adopt the policy, make a recommendation, adopt the policy as presented by staff. Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. You win.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero. All right. So, we want to receive the report on the City of Hollister 2040.
Mayor Casey?
Yes.
Mayor Casey, and I neglected in my dual role in that we did not have any public comments for that item, just to make sure I noted, I noted that.
So, no public comment. All right. So, we'll move on then to reports. Report of the City of Hollister 2040 general plan update and possible direction. So, may we have the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor. While staff pulls the presentation up, we'd like to introduce our Development Services Director, Kristi Hopper, who will be providing tonight's presentation and will be available to answer any questions you may have.
Let's see if this is working. I may not. Let's see. Nope. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Thank you for the introduction. My name is Kristi Hopper. I'm the Development Services Director for this city. And so, tonight, next slide, please. Thank you. Tonight, you'll be receiving a report on the 2040 general plan update and providing possible directions to staff. So, just to give you a background on this process, it's been, it's been a lengthy one, but really started back in 2018. And that's when the city council adopted a resolution, putting together a general plan advisory committee. And it was a five-member committee at that time to look at the general plan update. And then in 2019, an RFP went out to find a consultant to help prepare the update. 2020 was a very, very busy year for the general plan update. The contract was approved with Placeworks Incorporated for the preparation. We had members of the city council that were appointed to the general plan advisory committee. And then started off with the G-PAC, that's the acronym we'll use, for our first meeting for the kickoff in mid-2020. Four virtual visioning workshops were also compressed within about a month. And then also then the G-PAC meeting number two later on in 2020. Next slide, please. A third G-PAC meeting was held at the end of 2020. And then, at the beginning of 2021, the city council appointed two planning commission members of the G-PAC by consensus. And then going into 2021, a resolution, the 2018 resolution was repealed and replaced by a new resolution that changed the membership of the G-PAC from five members to seven members. And that increased, increased the public members by two. Then, policy workshops continued throughout the year. And also, then, those three members of the public were appointed to the G-PAC. And then we went on to G-PAC meeting number four. Next slide, please. And then five, six, and seven consecutively. Then, a planning commission meeting was held for the environmental impact report scoping meeting. The final G-PAC meeting in this phase was held in April. And then there was also a Spanish language policy options community workshop. Next slide, please. In May of 2021, Planning Commission received the G-PAC recommendation, thank you, recommendation on policy direction, and provided recommendation to city council. And then city council received the planning commission and G-PAC recommendation on policy direction, and then provided final impact input to staff and the Placeworks, we'll call that our general plan team, on policy direction for the general plan. And so, the last real update the city council has had was in, was last year, received a report on the policy direction that was provided by the previous city council at the June 21st, 2021 meeting, and also then confirmed the policy direction for the general plan. Next slide, please. So, the project statics, next step. So, the draft 2040 general plan is ready to release tomorrow, with direction, of course, from the city council this evening. So, it is ready for public, for public release. We still are finalizing the draft general plan, of course, the climate action plan and the agricultural preservation program. And so, the actions that will be going on, or the workshops over the next months, would be to publicize the draft plans and also do the outreach program. So, putting the notice of review availability would be in local newspapers, on our website, through social media. We have a general plan mailing list. We're also asking community-based organizations, as well as the city council, to really help spread the word on the draft general plan. And then also, we'll be holding two public outreach meetings. And the first one would be a virtual workshop, which is a one-and-a-half-hour educational meeting, which will go over the draft plans, answer questions, and receive feedback. And then, meeting number two, in order to reach people in a different way, would be an in-person feedback meeting during a city event. So, an event that's already structured, that's already been planned, that would meet the community at places they already gather. So, with a booth with information about the draft plans. And then also, a little short format activity to collect feedback on the draft plans. And I've put on there, on this slide, and also the last slide, is a website that we have for the Hollister general plan update. The next step would be to review the draft plans with the general plan advisory committee. So, the current scope of work that Placeworks has includes three final G-PAC meetings during this phase. And that would be to confirm that the general plan team has incorporated council direction on the policy and land use updates. G-PAC would provide feedback on the draft plans. And then, the draft plans would go to Planning Commission. There'd be overview of the plans to Planning Commission, allow more for community feedback as well at Planning Commission. And then Planning Commission ultimately will make a recommendation to city council about proposed changes, if there are any. The next step would be asking council for direction on the draft plans. Once again, another overview, another opportunity for community and G-PAC feedback, and also then bring forward the Planning Commission And also then bring forward the planning commission recommendation. And then final direction would be asked for by staff on the draft plans. So following the council meeting, the general plan team would then update the draft general plan, climate action plan, and, and the agricultural preservation program to incorporate council direction, complete the final environmental impact report, and that is published after the draft environmental impact report, public comment period. And then according to the schedule, we're anticipating in the fall of this year, staff would return to planning commission and city council for certification of the EIR and adoption of the general plan, the cap, and the agricultural preservation program. Next slide, please. So this slide is potential avoidable delays to the project. They're unavoidable when it comes to, of course, environmental impact reports and comments and things like that. But avoidable delays for the council to consider is if during this time, the council considers any general plan amendments before the adoption of the general plan update. The scope of the project, the timeline and the budget may be significantly affected. For example, if the city council approves an amendment to a land use designation or the sphere of influence that were not anticipated in the, in the current scope of the draft plan, the scope would need to be revised. The EIR potential would need to be updated to reflect the changes. And the modifications to the scope of any sequer document would result in additional analysis of the project impacts. And that could significantly delay adoption of the general plan update. So Placework has, has been contracted to hold these last three G-PAC meetings. The purpose of those would be, of the, the G-PAC would be, at this point, would be discuss the public review of the draft general plan. One city council member and one planning commission appointee no longer are holding their respective positions and so they are unable to hold positions on the G-PAC. So the previous purpose of the G-PAC was to supplement the community input, provided at public workshops and pop-up events, et cetera. They did provided systemic review of draft work products and made recommendations to the planning commission and council on the content. The members served as project ambassadors, spread the word, encourage participation, and build community support. So at this phase of the project, the role of the G-PAC is really to confirm that the draft general plan reflects previous council, planning, commission, and G-PAC direction. So that's the current role. Next slide. December nineteenth, city council meeting. The council did make committee assignments for twenty twenty-three. However, the vacant council seat for the G-PAC was not seated. The members were required to be appointed by council per resolution twenty eighteen twenty-seven. The membership of the G-PAC was, was talked about, that it would be discussed at a future meeting. So to date, staff have not received further direction from the council, thank you, regarding the G-PAC, which brings us to any discussion that, that the council would like to have. So for the public and for, for the council, any information on the twenty forty general plan will be on the website that's on the screen and there's also a general email for the general plan. And I'll take any questions. And our senior planner, Eva Kelly, who's been with this project for the, since the beginning, is also here if there's any specific questions I can't answer.
Council, we have discussion, questions? Councilmember Resendes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You stated in your presentation, first off, thanks for the presentation. It was very, very informative. You stated in the presentation that there was an increase in the membership. Do you know why there was an increase in the membership?
So that resolution is at the end of, of the staff report, just, just so you have it. That was done in twenty twenty-one. I just don't recall exactly what the...
Well, I'm going to assume because the, the three people that were appointed were members of the public. So I'm going to assume that we wanted more public participation.
Members.
And...
Makes sense.
Yeah, so then we went from a five...
To a seven.
To a seven.
Correct.
Planning commission, okay, planning committee. You said that we're going to put this out tomorrow. Why tomorrow? What's the holdup? Like, why have we not, it feels like we have not moved forward with the general plan. The last time we heard from the general, or an update on the general plan was in January. What's so special about tomorrow? Why are we moving forward tomorrow? And why haven't we made any more progress on the general plan?
Staff wanted to make the presentation on the general plan update to the city council before the draft general plan was released to the public.
Councilmember, if I may, we're basically at a point, we've heard direction to get, get it moving. And we've been working, staff has been working extremely diligently to get it there. Those appointments were not made back in December and it was mentioned they'd be made at a future meeting. We're at the point of publishing that draft and so we're, we're back before you to provide an update.
Very good. Some of the delays that you spoke of, have we experienced some of those delays as far as amending the general plan and costing the city more money to increase the scope and the contract with Placeworks?
From what I understand, and Ms. Kelly, correct me if I, if I misspeak. Only one general plan amendment has really gone forward of the general plan update. And, but those anticipated changes of, if, if this amendment actually goes forward and the land use changes has already been anticipated in the draft general plan. So currently, no additional costs have been incurred by the city and no changes to the EIR have had to happen because it was already anticipated.
Very good. And then my last question, I think this would be for the city attorney, or, or yourself. Can the mayor make her appointments tonight and is that what you would recommend?
So it's possible to make them, anyone interested in this topic would be here tonight and they knew that you were talking about the G-PAC. So that could be part of the direction.
Okay. Reading the policy that we adopted, and I would assume that the most recent one was the twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven.
Correct.
On page of the packet, two ninety-eight, it says vacancies created by resignation or removal of non-attendance may be filled by the city council for the remainder of the term. The city council may elect to have the Development Services Department collect letters of interest in any vacancy of the council's consideration. In the event of a vacancy in the chairperson's position, the vice chair shall succeed as the chairperson for the balance of the chairperson's terms and the committee. Do you recall who the chairperson was of the general plan committee?
I know that the chair was Mayor Nasser Velazquez, but I, I believe that you, Councilmember Resendes, were the vice...
I don't remember. That's why I'm asking. I'm being, I'm being very truthful.
I thought it was David Hughboy. I thought I remembered him being vice chair.
That very well could be true. I, I don't recall the vice chair, but I do know that the chair was Mayor Velazquez at the time.
I'm going to continue reading. It says, so I would assume if it's Mr. Hughboy or myself, we would automatically step into the chair position per the policy, shall elect a successor to fill the vacancy, then somebody help, would have to be elected or selected for a vice chair. In the event of a vacancy in the vice chair's position, basically, we would have to have the general plan committee meet to determine there's a vacancy. Or do we not? Because it says here, members appointed to the committee shall serve until the City of Hollister general plan has been adopted and the ER has been certified and/or the city council discharges the committee or until individual members resign or is removed for non-attendance. So they would have determination of non-attendance is from reading the policy. Then it would have to, they would have to elect a chair and a vice chair. Then it would have to come back to the council for the mayor to make her appointments of the vacancies. That's how I read the policy.
So there's two, the two members that are no longer holding their current positions on city council and planning commission can no longer hold those positions on the G-PAC because they no longer hold these positions, which is why that there's two, two vacancies.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Now that's... Yeah, oh, excuse me. The three members of the public, depending upon the, the direction of the council this evening, will be, we're, we're ready to be contacting them as well.
Councilmember Burns.
Thank you. With those two vacancies, though, Director, is there still a quorum on the committee?
A quorum on the G-PAC committee?
Committee, right.
Yes.
Okay, so, so, so what Councilmember Resendes was talking about would be an ideal situation if they already were there. But we can still move forward knowing that there's a quorum on that G-PAC currently, correct? Okay, and so, Director, you talked about, once this is released, there'll be two additional meetings, one virtual and one in person. And, and will there be translation services so that we can reach out and ensure that everybody that has interests can be heard?
Yes, there will be.
Okay, thanks. And then, once adopted by this council, can you describe what the process is to then go, go back and amend the, the general plan if the council were so desiring? And, and my sense is that can be done on a case-by-case basis, but can you speak to that specifically, please, Director?
So the, the process to amend a general plan is it, it's done, it could be done by resolution. However, the, the council can only amend the general plan four times per year. So there is a limitation.
So, so in that four times, though, could the council, if, if your department were to coordinate, let's say, for example, we had two or three that wanted to go for it, can they be bundled or is it simply just four times? So it could be amended for four specific projects or is it just quarterly, in essence, that it can be amended?
Four, at four times. So I have experience, unless laws have changed. I have had experiences where one time was a bundle of general plan amendments and that was one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Director. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Morales, questions?
No questions. Thank you so much for the presentation and the report. So just thoughts, because I think you're asking for direction as far as what to do with the G-PAC at this point. And we did not make appointments at the time because we were waiting. We've been waiting for over a year to see a draft. And my feeling is that we really need to get the general plan out for public review and start moving forward. At this point, you know, the G-PAC has given their input and created a draft. The committee hasn't met in over a year. You've got two vacancies and frankly, there's a third member who's in transition, who's going to probably move in a few months, so that'll be three vacancies. I just feel like bringing in three new members doesn't make sense at this point to review what other members have done. And I don't believe that at this point, you know, we're going to start review process. I don't know that we need the G-PAC to look back and see if the council has their, their things input, if we're going to have the council be reviewing it as well. And the same thing with the planning commission, if they're looking to see if planning commission's input has been in there. It just feels like kind of redundant in a way. I, I think that there'll be opportunity for planning commissioners who sat on the G-PAC to give input when the planning commission review happens. There's opportunity for any of the public members of the G-PAC to give comment or make remarks when you do the public review, as well as the council members to give their input that's out on the G-PAC. So to me, it seems more expedient to disband the G-PAC at this point so that we can move forward and start doing our reviews. So that's my, my thoughts, so.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I respectfully disagree. I think that we have a due diligence to finish what we started. The general plan committee is there for a reason, to give recommendations to the planning commission and to the city council. And my request and my recommendation would be for the mayor to appoint two people that are currently not there. However, if that doesn't happen, regardless, they have a quorum and they should continue to meet. In fact, I think they should have met quite a long time ago. So having heard those recommendations at whenever it's most appropriate, I'd like to hear from your, from the staff. What is the plan for the general plan committee moving forward? Is it necessary? Is it not necessary, hearing both my, my concerns and the mayor's concerns?
There's an attachment to your staff report that really, it's the, whether or not the G-PAC continues and, and holds the three additional meetings or if they don't, really it just, it just impacts our, the schedule. So, and not by that much. It's, it's about by about a month because there would be three scheduled G-PAC meetings. Those, those members would be basically confirming that the draft general plan is what was as drafted is per the direction that they provided to, to planning commission and council. There'll be a bit of a learning curve probably for the new members of the, and so I, I won't make a recommendation either way because it is still in the scope of, of Placeworks' contract. And so staff would be continuing to recommend, you know, to recommend with the scope. But the city council does have the ability to dissolve the G-PAC if they find that, that, that's the will of the council.
Yes, Councilmember Burns.
Thank you. Just to affirm either my confusion or that I got it. If this council, this council this evening could, could direct staff to release the report, correct?
Yes, it's ready to release.
Right, and, and so whether or not the committee, the G-PAC committee is fully staffed or partially staffed, there's a quorum on that committee now, correct?
As far as we know, we need to confirm with the public members.
Okay.
Councilmember, if I, if I may add, have, I don't believe we have received a, a notice of resignation. So because the count, because the committee has not met, the assumption is that the folks are still participants.
Okay, all right. And so if, if there's a quorum and the report is ready, the worst-case scenario is we release the report and it, and, and we discover we don't have a quorum and we need to appoint people. It could delay processing for up to a month. Is that what I heard?
Not necessarily. The, the public review draft will be out there, so everybody's able to review it and start to provide comments. The schedule that we had provided on attachment A was really with the appointment of the, the G-PAC. We still have the time on there for, for appointment and that would be April through June. And then during this time, we would then publish the draft environmental impact report. So we want these going at the same time so we can start the forty-five day public review period of the, the draft environmental impact report. During, then, the G-PAC would then review the draft general plan over the month of June and July. So that would be the three G-PAC meetings to just kind of go over everything. They're public meetings so that the, the public can come to those. And then after that would be the planning commission review and we would start all of the hearings. The only change, if the G-PAC is not reconvened, is it just bumps everything up a month. So it could be potentially that the adoption hearings would be maybe in October rather than November.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor. Those were my comments and questions.
Question. So the charge of the G-PAC going forward is simply to review the document to see if council and planning commission input is in there? Is that, I'm not sure I understand the charge going forward, what the G-PAC is actually doing with these three meetings.
Yeah, the charge of the, of the G-PAC at this point is, is confirming that the direction of the council, ultimately the direction of the council to the general plan team was followed.
So to, you know, for new members to come on board, they weren't there, they don't know what was decided, so...
They'll be, right, they could review minutes and that's...
They wouldn't really be able to participate in that review. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have you or anyone in the staff worked on a general plan process before? And is Placeworks here to answer some of these questions? I'd like to get an opinion from somebody who's worked on a general plan before. And if not, that's okay. I'm just, I have a specific question in regards to that.
No, and Placeworks is not here on this, this update.
Okay. Has anybody in the room on our staff worked on a general plan before?
And I have, but it... And I have, but a very long time ago.
Perfect. Would you say it's unusual to disband or disbarred the general plan committee? It sounds to me like it's a system of checks and balances to be put in place before the process is completed. Have you heard of that before?
I've seen it all across the board, all different.
Okay.
So some contracts don't even have the G-PAC convene after the draft general plan. That is just not in the contract, or not in the scope of work. Some have the G-PAC involved all the way through adoption hearings. It really goes across the board on what that ultimate adopted scope is.
Would it be possible to get a recommendation from Placeworks on what their experience has been and what they would recommend?
We could certainly ask their contractor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would we want to table a decision on adding members of the G-PAC and just give direction to release to the public? I mean, would that be an option?
Ultimately, that's the will of the council. The draft is ready to go to the public. It could be put out in public, and this could be brought back solely on the decision of the G-PAC, if that's the will of the council.
I would prefer that simply, and we could get some input from Placeworks then as well, and bring it back in the future, because it wouldn't stop your process of releasing it to the public, right? So.
Correct.
Okay, I would be willing to do that.
How do the rest of you councilmembers send us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My position is, we shouldn't stop anything. We should continue putting it out to public. We should continue having the G-PAC meet to fill the vacancies, and then just keep moving forward. And then if at some time the council wants to revisit whether or not they're going to disband it, then I would feel comfortable making that decision, having some input from our contractors as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
I support moving forward, and we can figure the other piece out once we get more information.
Okay, Councilmember.
I thought this was for questions, and I would like to hear if there's any public comment on this issue, so that we can take that into consideration before any decision is made.
Can we go ahead with public comment?
Yes.
Okay, we do have one public speaker, Victor Gomez, online.
Hi, good evening, council. If you could hear me, this is Victor Gomez with Pinnacle Strategy. First of all, I do have to say, what G-PAC? I'm shocked to hear that you even have a general plan advisory committee. I have not heard anything from this so-called committee in years. So I'm happy that a draft general plan is actually being released, finally, after years of delays and delays and delays. The only reason I have had clients with interest in general plan amendments is because of the constant delays in getting this general plan completed. So kudos to you, to your staff, for finally being at this point where you get released this general plan, this draft general plan for discussion. I have a pending general plan application with the planning department currently. It is for the Laveling project, that I'm sure you guys are all aware of, right at Laveling, and across the street from Laveling School. We have attempted to pursue or move forward with that project and doing a pre-zone for annexation. You preferred to see a medium-density residential at that site. From what I understand, and Kristi, please feel free to correct me if I'm mistaken, your new general plan has that parcel, or those parcels as medium-density. So if that is the case, we're very, very happy to see that. We would pull our general plan application, our general plan amendment application, if that is the case. If not, we plan on pursuing the general plan amendment, whether you support it or not, because that was the direction that the council gave us in April of 2021, nearly two years ago, when we came before you. So we do want to proceed with that, but again, if your general plan has the new designation, we're ready to pursue a pre-zone for annexation with that new medium-density designation and move forward with that project. My question would be, and Kristi, you can feel free to, you know, we could talk about this some other time, or if you can answer it tonight, that would be fabulous, but if you're, if the zoning for these parcels in the new general plan, or conceptual general plan, draft general plan, is medium-density residential, we'd like to actually pursue that as soon as possible. So we do have questions on when we could pursue that and how early we could get going on that work, since it is the desire of the council, again, to see a medium-density there. With that said, congratulations on having this draft completed. It's been a number of years since, again, this work started, but we're looking forward to, as members of the public, as consultants, we're ready to see this draft of the general plan and finally move this, the Vision 2040 Plan forward. Thank you.
And those are all the public comments we have for this item.
Okay. Does anyone have any other comment, or are we, what are we doing at this point? Do we have direction? Do we have a consensus? What is the will of the council?
I'd like to move it forward, based on what I've heard this evening. Thank you.
I second that. I'd like to move it forward without the G-PAC, just move it forward so the community can start making comments.
Tim, what was your, you wanted to move forward with or without the G-PAC?
I would just argue move forward with the G-PAC, because it currently exists, and we'll figure out that piece. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, the report's ready to go, and I don't think we delay that. And we still have a G-PAC committee majority, as I understand it. So I don't even know that it's really necessary to fill those positions. And I would like to hear what staff determines from Placeworks, but I don't want to hold this up in lieu of that.
Councilmember Rosentus.
Thank you. I haven't thought of that, and I think that Councilmember brings up a good point. We're concerned about appointing new people. Why should we even bother appointing new people? We've got a full quorum of five people who have been there. Let's move forward without further delay. We can wait to hear back from Placework, but I'm not in favor of disbanding the current G-PAC. So that would be my position. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, Councilmember Burns, move forward with existing G-PAC? Is that what you're suggesting also?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And Councilmember Morales, you want to move forward with no G-PAC, or with further consideration about the G-PAC? What's your?
So if we're moving forward, we, so my understanding from the presentation was that two members are no longer qualified, and I heard from Mayor Casey that there might be a third, so.
And we don't know about public.
That we don't know about. So then we have two that are eligible. So you're looking to move forward with two members?
So, if I can, those are assumptions. We can't make those determinations now. As of now, there's been no resignations, and we have a full quorum of the G-PAC. If we want to pick up those assumptions and bring them back to the council at a further time, then we should do that at the appropriate time. But right now, we have no resignations, and we have a full G-PAC. So again, just as the speaker said, we need to move forward. This has been long enough, and we need to keep moving forward without stalling it any further.
So what's your will, then, Councilmember?
So if there's interest to move forward with a G-PAC, then make the appointments. Make new appointments, so that you can have members and have that process move forward. But it should be, it should be people that are eligible to review, even if there's a learning curve. But yes, we should definitely move forward. If you want to hear back and hear everything else, we shouldn't delay, but we should definitely make sure that we're abiding by what needs to happen. And if there are no resignations, it doesn't mean like that administratively, they no longer qualify. So administratively, we may be able to address it, and Mary can speak to that or not. But if there is consensus on moving it forward, if it must be with the G-PAC, then I'd rather have new assignments. If not, then we should make it, we should move forward, because the G-PAC will also have the opportunity through the process to make comments regardless. So we don't necessarily need to have a G-PAC in order for that to happen. As we heard, there's other jurisdictions that don't even have a G-PAC. So my number-one preference is to move forward without a G-PAC, because there's a lot of unknowns, and I don't want to further delay this process.
And I concur with you as far as that. I don't think we need to have a G-PAC at this point. I'd rather just move forward and keep moving forward. So, Councilmember Rosentus.
I would support that. That was my original plan, is your second option. Make the two appointments tonight, and let's move forward with the G-PAC.
She just, her preferences.
I said my number-one preference is to move forward without a G-PAC, because there's a lot of unknowns. And members of the G-PAC can, there's ample opportunity to provide feedback throughout the entire process. So they can, they can actually provide their feedback. If you look at the timeline, there's a lot of virtual visiting, community workshops. There's a lot of opportunities for them to provide that feedback regardless, already embedded in the process.
I must have misunderstood. So you don't support making the two appointments tonight?
That is correct.
Okay. My apologies.
I don't think we have consensus moving forward, so we.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think as a council, we can absolutely give staff direction to move forward to release the report.
Yes.
And then we can figure out the G-PAC piece later, because I don't want to delay this.
Absolutely.
And so, and it may be in a follow-up meeting based on additional information, that we will then be able to make a more educated decision on who's vacant, who's full, and what we need to do, and what other jurisdictions have done, but that would be my recommendation to council.
How do, do we have consensus on that?
I agree with that. We should release it.
I do as well. Councilmember Rosentus.
I'm confused at this point. So the recommendation is to move forward.
To release.
To release, yes, absolutely. I think we need a release, and we need to continue moving forward, yes.
But to make a decision as far as the G-PAC at a later time, not tonight. That's the, that's what Councilmember Burns just proposed.
I don't support stopping the G-PAC.
That's not what he's saying. He's saying, making a decision as far as.
Yeah, I think that's what we said. We're going to hear back from Placeworks, and then we make one. But as of now, we have a quorum. So if they need to meet, then they should be allowed to meet, according to our policy.
I need some direction, City Attorney, as far as, if we're trying to make a decision as far as what to do with the G-PAC. Are they moving forward as a G-PAC if we haven't made a decision?
Well, according to your own policy, they're supposed to meet and so provide the input, and the purpose is laid out for their existence. So there's.
So making no decision doesn't change anything?
Exactly. No decision leaves in place what you have.
Okay, so then I guess our only consensus tonight is just to move forward with the release. Okay.
So can I seek some clarity?
Join the club.
So, I'll bifurcate the two items. Moving forward, we'll release, we'll post the plan tomorrow, as planned, and I think that was, that was the plan coming forward. As for the G-PAC, as our City Attorney just mentioned, you have confirmed two vacancies out of seven total seats. So if we bring back an item, currently, the G-PAC exists with two members short, and the G-PAC has a purpose that's outlined in the policy that was adopted by council, as our City Attorney just mentioned. So therefore, as we go through this process, we can bring something back quickly. We can reach out and confirm. We have not received confirmed resignations from any of the public members, so we can check in on their interest. The assumption would be that if they have not made a resignation, that they are still part of it. They just have not been asked to meet. And so we can check, come back at the next meeting with Placeworks on the line, as well as a status update, and seek ultimate direction. I think if we do that on the 17th, then we are in alignment with the timeline.
Okay, I would agree to that.
Am I understanding the recommendation as proposed?
I think it's imperative to get back with the public members, because it's been over a year since they've met. So there's no telling that they're actually still willing to sit on the committee at this point. We want to make sure that we have a quorum, that we don't end up without one, so.
Correct. Just because there is no consensus either way to act, other than a consensus to revisit, so therefore it would stay in line.
So, we'll move forward, release, and we'll revisit as far as the G-PAC.
Okay, it will be posted online tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so.
Mayor, if I may, as we post tomorrow, I'd like to just take a minute to just give a thank you to the staff.
Yes, thank you.
This has been a Herculean lift of our city staff, our contracted partners, Placeworks, and through pandemic, through many different challenges, competing interests, priorities, new projects, and they've kept their eye on the, their eyes on the prize and have got it to this stage. And I just want to take a minute to say thank you and acknowledge all of their hard work.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to move on to a legislative update. Can we have our staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So my colleague, Rob Lamelli, is going to go ahead and give this update. It's regarding new legislation, as well as proposed legislation that could affect city government and its operations, so. Turn it over to you, Rob.
I think we have the pointer figured out. Okay. Good evening, council. My name's Robert Lamelli. I work for LaZona Smith as an attorney. I'm here this evening to provide a legislative update. We've gone through and cherry-picked some of the items that we feel warrant discussion. One of the things that we're going to start out with is called the taxpayer. I had it. Yeah, there you go. Is that me? Okay, all right. Is the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. I will preface this with the fact that this is as much information, I guess I should say, clear information as we can get at this point, because the individuals who drafted this initiative themselves haven't quite, they don't really know what they're doing as well, so it's still a little bit in flux. The title of the act is a bit misleading, and the reason why we're discussing it this evening is because it does have a tremendous ability to impact city finances, as well as state finances. So what this ballot initiative does is it expands the definition of what constitutes a tax, and it requires that any new or increased taxes or fees be passed by a two-thirds vote of the electorate. The overwhelming majority of municipalities in California oppose the initiative because of the severe impact that it will have on their ability to provide services. So currently, cities in California receive their bulk, as you all know, their bulk of funding from taxes and fees. Examples of revenue from taxes or property taxes, sales taxes, utilities taxes, and transient occupancy fee taxes. Fees that generate revenue can include building permit fees, regulatory fees, which include development fees, exactions, and also fines, to name a few. And these revenues are typically used to generate funds for public safety, public works, and parks in general. Currently, taxes are required to receive the approval of you, the city council, or the local governing body, and they're required to approve, to be approved by the voters in the jurisdiction. Most local governments will propose taxes, or who propose taxes will require a two-thirds vote by the governing body, with special taxes requiring a two-thirds vote of the electorate, or a simple majority for general taxes. What this means is, if there's a special tax that's going to be passed and it's going to be utilized for a specific purpose, it requires a two-thirds vote of the electorate. If it's going to be for general purposes, then it requires a simple majority. Under the initiative that has qualified for the 2024 ballot, every levy, charge, or exaction of any kind imposed by the state or local agency will be designated a tax, unless it's an exempt charge. And every revenue measure not defined as an exempt charge would be subject to voter approval of two-thirds of the electorate. The initiative will also be retroactive, which means it will undo any fee increases, any new taxes that have been passed by city council, and it goes back to January 1, 2022, unless the tax or fees were passed and they meet the requirements of this act. So, again, this also affects fee, the fee structure. Currently, fees are set at a level that's reasonable, reasonably related to the cost for service. If the cost for service is not reasonably related to the cost, it's a tax. Allowing for fees to be set at this level has allowed cities a flexibility to make adjustments about things in the future which they can't possibly know, costs of living adjustments, inflation, et cetera. To prove that a fee is reasonably related, a city only needs to meet a preponderance of evidence test, so 50/50, right? Local governments also are currently. Local governments also are currently able to delegate their authority to adjust fees to administrative entities like city departments, uh, and other departments within the city limits. Under the new initiative, uh, to introduce new fees or propose increases, a measure must be introduced and be passed by two-thirds electorate vote, and the city will be required to set the fee at a level that is the minimum amount necessary to provide services. Now, this is where you can run into issues, because how do we quantify what the minimum amount necessary is? You could look at it in terms of a fire engine. If you need a new fire engine, do you need a new one? Or do you just need one that runs? Because if it's the minimum amount necessary, you know, a, an argument could be made. The other issue that arises with this act is that it increases the burden on cities to be able to prove by clear and convincing evidence that the increase is necessary and that it is a minimum amount necessary. So clear and convincing would essentially be between, uh, reasonable doubt and fifty-fifty, so in the seventies range. So, the other issue would be that this would allow anyone who wants, uh, who's assessed a fee or, um, you know, is, is assessed a fine, they will be able to challenge these fees because they can easily claim that they exceed the minimum amount necessary. Where this will usually, or typically where it's anticipated for this to come into play is in exactions or development fees. Uh, developers will easily, uh, be able to claim that the city is taking too much, um, because what they're taking isn't the minimum amount necessary for the services and costs that they're covering. This will also lead to an increase in litigation costs that are assessed to the cities, because no, just based off of, uh, the opposition currently, this act is probably going to be tied up in litigation between tons and tons of cities for about ten years, especially with its retroactive effects. And the passage of, of this essentially will reduce the services that a city will be able to provide to its constituency. It'll eliminate your ability to be able to increase fees, uh, it'll eliminate your ability to increase taxes to be able to cover, uh, new expenses. Where this could also come into place is it would impact labor negotiations. Labor costs make up a huge chunk of a city's budget, and in a, uh, you know, in a current economy where labor unions and, and employees are negotiating for increases, in order for the city to be able to cover those increased costs under this act, they would have to submit a, an initiative to the electorate that would have to pass by two-thirds vote. And then you still get into the argument of whether or not that's the minimum amount necessary to cover those costs. So even though it's called the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, it really does hamstring government, and it will limit, uh, municipalities' ability to be able to fund all of the different programs and services that they have. Uh, another thing that's interesting to note is that this qualified for the 2024 ballot, and it only needs a simple majority to pass. Which is a bit ironic, that it only needs a simple majority to pass, yet it's increasing the, uh, the requirement to two-thirds for virtually everything else. Uh, this also will apply to state, uh, legislation as well, so. The next item is Assembly Bill 2188. It will be effective January one, 2024. What this does is it adds Government Code 12954, which amends the Fair Employment and Housing Act and prohibits employers from discriminating against applicants or employees because, one, they've used cannabis off the job and away from the workplace, or, two, were found to have, uh, non-psychoactive cannabis metabolites in their hair, blood, urine, or other bodily fluids by a drug screening test. The bill does not apply to employees in building and construction trades, or to applicants or employees hired for positions that require certain federal background checks. Um, I did check to see if there was an actual test that could determine current impairment, uh, due to cannabis, and they haven't quite figured that out yet, and so. It doesn't exist to test current impairment. Uh, employees who claim that this, uh, protection against cannabis use has been violated can file a claim with DFEH, and they can seek back pay, reinstatement, uh, compensatory and punitive damages, interest fees, and costs. So they will be able to bring claims, uh, if they feel that their, uh, rights to use of cannabis have been violated. Our suggestion on this and for other cities is essentially that employers will need to revise their applicable employee handbooks, policies, and drug testing procedures to be able to comport with this, uh, assembly bill before it goes into effect in January 2024. Another act that has been passed federally is the Supporting the Health and Safety of Law Enforcement's Act. Uh, this act, uh, creates a new grant program to support coordination between community mental health centers and law enforcement officers on mental health issues, including homelessness and public safety. Essentially, it allows for a social worker to be able to work alongside officers when responding to calls related to mental health emergencies. There's a pilot program that has already been instituted within California. Uh, it's run out of San, uh, San Diego County. It's called the Psychiatric Emergency Response Team, or PERT, and they've actually found that it has been overwhelmingly successful. It's been so successful that the program has actually been, been endorsed by the, uh, Peace Officers Research Association of California, or PORAC. Uh, so essentially, this federal legislation will help to expand the PERT program. And hopefully, lead to better outcomes overall, as it has already in San Diego. Assembly Bill 742 has been proposed, and it appears it will be likely to pass. What this does is it restricts police canine use. Uh, it'll prevent police officers from using an unleashed, unleashed, unleashed police canine to arrest or apprehend a person. It also prohibits the use of police canines for crowd control at any assembly, protest, or demonstration. Uh, prohibits the use of a police canine for biting under all circumstances. Uh, canines will still be allowed to be used, uh, in search and rescue, explosive detections, and narcotics detection. And it also prohibits law enforcement agencies from providing or authorizing any use of canines, uh, or training that is not consistent with the passage of this bill. Assembly Bill 1684. This allows for the immediate imposition of administrative fines and penalties for the violation of building, plumbing, electrical, or other similar, uh, structural, health, and safety or zoning requirements, if the violation exists as a result of, or to facilitate commercial cannabis activity, including cultivation, manufacturing, processing, distribution, or retail use. And it'll also allow municipalities to authorize an ordinance that declares unlicensed commercial cannabis activity a public nuisance. Currently, uh, most ordinances only allow for immediate imposition uh, of administrative fines related to these types of, uh, violations, uh, only after proper notice has been given and an opportunity to remedy any potential violations has been, uh, allowed. So this is actually a bit of a change to allow for that immediate imposition. Your notes slayed, so I'm trying to move. Uh, Senate Bill 1214, this has already gone into effect, and this is something that we've been having to deal with. It relates to the California Public Records Act request. Specifically, it, uh, prevents local planning agencies from allowing public access to copyrighted architectural drawings in a manner that would allow for them to be copied. Absent the architect's permission, local planning agencies and legislative bodies are prohibited from posting copies or architectural, or post ar-, of architectural or post-architectural drawings on the internet. Um, there is an ability for an architect or an engineer to be able to provide what are called site plans that, you know, the city can then use, uh, during their presentations, or to put in their, into their agendas. Uh, we've actually worked with Holister to be able to amend their applications to be able to address this issue. If, uh, if a site plan is asked for and not provided by an architect or an engineer, then permission is automatically implied that the city can then use those official architectural drawings within their presentations, uh, and not have to worry about violating this government code section. Uh, Assembly Bill 1033, uh, this bill essentially will allow for cities to create an ordinance that, that allows for ADUs or accessory dwelling units to be sold separate from their primary residence. Um, currently, there is an ability under the government code to be able to sell a, an ADU separate from the primary residence, but it is quite onerous. So this now, by law, will allow municipalities to create an ordinance that would allow for ADUs to be sold separately from the actual principal residences for which, you know, they were built. Uh, Senate Bill 1489, this is, uh, allows, uh, city council or legislative bodies to forego the reading of ordinances when adopting them. Uh, they just have to meet the three requirements, which is the full ordinance is included on a published agenda, a copy of the full ordinance is available to the public online, and a copy of the ordinance is made available to the public in print at the meeting prior to the introduction or passage of the ordinance. This can help, it, it eliminates the need to have to read by title or an entire ordinance, the, I guess the practical barrier to it would be three. Having a copy of the full ordinance made available, uh, to the public in print at the meeting. I don't think that that's typically something that's done. So if it was going to be incorporated, that would be probably the, the hardest requirement to meet.
Jennifer, I think you do that, don't you have a full?
Don't you have a full agenda out there?
Yes, we do, and I was just speaking with deputy city clerk here. We, we do have a full copy of the packet that includes the ordinance, and we have that for introduction and for, um, adoption.
Thank you.
So you guys are set, you're ready to go? This is, uh, no need to go over the remote attendance and teleconferencing. Uh, Assembly Bill 1297 will require local governments to complete a quarterly inventory of public restrooms that are owned and maintained by the local government entity, either directly or by contract. The purpose of this is for the state to be able to compile statistics in its, uh, ongoing efforts to address homelessness, uh, within the communities. But this will have to be done quarterly. Uh, Assembly Bill 1484 will require municipalities to require temporary, uh, public employees. Essentially, if you have a temporary public employee and they're doing the same tasks as a regular full-time employee, then upon request of that regular full-time employee's, uh, representative organization, the city will have to recognize now the temporary public employee as belonging to that bargaining unit. Uh, Assembly Bill 730 is another, uh, Public Records Act, uh, bill, and what this does is it requires an agency to promptly provide an employee with written notice of a request to disclose a record related to personnel, medical, or similar information to that employee. The bill, uh, requires the agency, before disclosing or making those records available, to provide not less than twenty-one days of notice to the employee of its intent to disclose. This essentially provides the employee an opportunity to do what's called a, uh, reverse CPRA lawsuit to prevent the disclosure of those records. It's also known as a mark in action. Uh, so Senate Bill 790, which will go into effect in 2023. Uh, this bill provides that unless exempt from CPRA disclosure by express provisions of law, executed contracts for the purchase of goods or services by a state or local agency, including the price and terms of payment, are public records subject to disclosure under the act. What has been happening, the, the reason that the Senate has introduced this is to prevent a lot of these contracts from being withheld, because the, uh, the provider of the contract will put some type of a provision within the contract saying that it's confidential, or that it's a proprietary record, and will attempt to skirt the production requirements under the CPRA by stipulating to one of those two items. This is essentially going to nullify any type of a, uh, any type of a clause within a contract, or similar type of an item that says it's a proprietary record or confidential. So it'll nullify that and allow for these records to be produced. And something that's really exciting is density bonus laws. Uh, the density bonus laws currently require a city or county to provide a developer that proposes a housing development with the city or county with a density bonus and other incentives or concessions specified. If the devil, if the developer agrees to construct certain types of housing, typically low-income housing. Uh, current law provides for the calculation of the amount of density bonus for each type of housing development that qualifies under these provisions. Uh, this bill will remove, or removes from the definition of maximum allowable residential density the provision that stated that the greater density, uh, prevails. If there was a difference between the general plan, or a specific plan, or a land use element, and an ordinance, what, what current law is, is that the greater density will prevail between the ordinance and these other items. This essentially removes that provision and will limit the maximum allowable residential density to whatever it is that's within the general plan, specific plan, or the element plan. So now there's, you don't get to pick between which one's bigger. And that is it.
All right, do we have questions? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, one quick question, the ADUs, um, that they can be sold separately, what is the date on that? When does it take effect?
So currently, there is a process which does allow for ADUs to be sold separately from a primary residence under Government Code 65852. This assembly bill, it will be proposed and will likely go into effect, uh, at the start of 2024.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Burns?
So, uh, in, in follow-up to Councilmember Resendez's question, that then allows the city to adopt an ordinance that would allow for that, but is it permit, i- is it one of those situations where if the city doesn't adopt an ordinance, that it reverts back to state law, which would still allow it?
So it would, it would continue to allow for what's currently allowable under state law, but this would allow the city to be able to create an ordinance that would be separate from the requirements necessarily that are required in the government code. The government code requirements are fairly onerous. It requires that the principal residence be purchased by a nonprofit corporation, um, that the property is held pursuant to a tenancy and common agreement that meets a laundry list of requirements. Um, there needs to be grant deed requirements that are met, uh, right of first refusal, so that you prevent necessarily one person from moving out of the ADU and, and not allowing the principal owner from being able to repurchase that property to make the property whole again. So there's several requirements under the government code, but this would essentially allows for the municipalities to create their own process of allowing that. They don't have to do it, but it would still, the, uh, current government code requirements would still be in place.
Thank you for the clarification, now that our, we're moving our general plan forward, I'm sure our planning department will have plenty of time to, to deal with this as we age them in dog years. Thank you, thanks, great presentation, very informative, and, um, look forward to seeing these periodically, I mean, I don't know, it feels like it's kind of a mixed bag to me, there's some really good things, and then some things that are very concerning to me, so thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem, the, the initial part, uh, regarding the Government Accountability Act is something that is very concerning to, I think, all government entities, and I know that the League of California Cities has also started a petition that several cities have already passed resolutions to, uh, join to be able to show that, you know, their opposition towards the act.
You're reading my mind, I was going to ask about the, about the California League of Cities, and so, frankly, maybe that's, I, I don't believe we've done anything like that yet, and so, um, thanks, I have another thing to bring up on my council comments, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales, do you have some questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation. I think maybe in the near future is to look at what the law is, but then how does that, what is the City of Hollister going to do with it? So for example, if there's policies on canines, then how, when is the City of Hollister or the Police Department going to update the policies and training? You know, Philly didn't have that as a work plan and timeline. What are the budgetary impacts that the City of Hollister is going to have to review in order to implement the law? For example, the cannabis?
Yes.
Right? There should be already existing policy on employee impairment and their ability to do their job. So is that coming to come back to city council, or is that going to be an administrative function that's only going to live within HRES, whatever that, whatever the, whoever holds that policy? So I think in addition to the policy or the law, then how, how and when, so when, who, and how much money is it going to cost, and what's the timeline for implementation is also what I'd like to see.
Okay.
And I know that's not your responsibility, but that's for staff to bring that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very helpful.
My pleasure.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not have any public comment for this item.
All right. Well, I think we're getting close to the end, so we would normally take a little break. Do you, what is the will of council? Need a break or push through?
Push on through.
Okay. So let's move on to reports from the city council members on committees. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Resendez?
Nothing to report. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Well, we can check back with her after, but I have nothing to report on committees. So why don't we just move on to informational reports? Councilmember Burns, did you want to start?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to request consensus of the council to issue a certificate of appreciation to Lea Gomez, who was my former Parks and Rec District Commissioner for District Four. And so I had a couple of years of excellent service for her, and she's moving on to future endeavors in other areas. And I want to thank her for her investment of time, and I'm looking forward to appoint somebody in the near future, but I would like to recognize her with a certificate. And also ask the council for consensus to issue a resolution recognizing Elena Salcedo and Cole Seymour from the Hollister Razorback Folkstyle Wrestling Club, representing Hollister, as our red. Elena finished second state, and Cole finished first state. And so congratulations to both of those young people, and I'd like to recognize them through our process. I would ask that in the near future that the city administration and city attorney's office bring up or bring forward an update on the administrative hearing officer process, the hearing officer qualification requirements and hearing fees. This is something that's been on my radar for probably two years now, and so I'd like to do that. Also like to recommend to city administration with council support that we create a quarterly employee recognition, recognition, or recognition program that would take place before council, and I'd like to move forward with that. Also, many of the community help support a scholarship fund that I've moved forward in recognition of past city council member Marty Richmond, and I've been made aware that we have 29 applicants for the scholarships. There's an urgent and great need, and I'd encourage members of the public, if you have the ability to donate, please reach out to me. I would very much like to ensure that we can touch most of these young people's lives with the scholarship moving forward. So I would like to get from the administration clarity on how much each council member has spent in their discretionary fund, and I would like for council to consider increasing that discretionary fund from what I understand it to be $50,000 to $100,000 moving forward to be spent in council districts through the budget process. I'd also like to get a staff report based on what Mr. Rob Rodriguez brought forward regarding the chemical use at the Vista Park Hill Gardens. I don't know what the the whole story is there, but what he brought forward is very concerning to me, and so I'd like to hear from that. And then I'd finally like to ask that we issue as a council through the administration a letter of support to oppose through the League of Cities the proposed legislation in reference to the two-thirds tax requirement for city taxes and fees and of that nature. And again, thank you, city attorneys, for your presentation. That's very important to me. And then finally, I would like to see moving forward where we as a council discuss trainings. The chief is always very thorough, and I know that other departments are also receiving training, and so I'd like to hear what they have to say moving forward. I'm aware that the planning department recently attended the Planning Commission training, and I think that's very helpful. And so I'd like to have a more comprehensive report on a on a council meeting for all the different departments and what they do. And then completely finally, I promise, thank you all, department heads and associated staff for being here. Your resource is very helpful to us, and so thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just an update on LGBTQ+ Pride Month. It's been brought to my attention that Supervisor Colin Cosmicke asked for the LGBTQ+ community to be recognized at the Board of Supervisors level in the county, and he couldn't even get a second to entertain the motion to have a discussion. So when I tell people this, and I've shared this with other people, they pretty much gasp, and they're shocked to hear that, especially because the county within their umbrella, they offer services and they pay for an LGBTQ+ youth drop-in center. And so it's pretty surprising that they won't even entertain a motion to have a discussion to recognize June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And this is not the first time that that's happened. So pretty disappointing, to say the least. Other than that, I was given this manual by Councilmember Tim Burns, and this is a manual, from my understanding, that he received from a training that he went to in Washington, DC. I have been meeting with the peer mentors at the LGBTQ+ drop-in center, and again, I'm a bit of an older LGBTQ+ community member, and I feel sometimes that we need to rely on the youth to to help educate us and what's the most appropriate means of addressing their their needs and their interests. So they were kind enough to update with all of these corrections that I have sat with them and glanced over. What I'm going to ask next is because we don't have a digital copy of this, is if we can use some of my discretionary funds to have it transcribed. I was talking to Councilmember Burns about this, and I think that's probably the most appropriate action, because I think that if we get this in a digital format and it's transcribed and it's from our own youth, our own community members with their input, it'd be very valuable. And we can then share this with other jurisdictions here locally, we can share it with our employees, and anybody that's interested in having a copy of that. And we can even look at adopting it at the council lever, level at some point. So I also gave to them on loan the first LGBTQ+ pride flag that we hung on the City of Hollister. I had them help me come up with a little, like, dedication, and then I signed it. At some point, I'd like to get the original council members' signatures on the flag as well, and possibly display that somewhere for everyone else to see, but they have it at their drop-in center for now. I did give to them the bag that you had given me also, Councilmember Morales, and I spoke to the the director of the program, and they're not sure if they have it within their budget to make that bag next year, but they're looking at possibly doing that for next, did I say next year? I meant this year. It's getting late. But they're possibly looking at doing something like that for the next pride. And then I I see Tina on the line. Tina, great job over at Dunn Park this weekend. There was a lot of community members. I really, really find so much value in in the events that Tina and the Rec Department have been putting on. Great job, great turnout with the yard sale and the Easter egg picture, Easter bunny pictures. And I just really feel like, you know, having the food trucks out there, it's just, it's well-attended, and they always do a wonderful job. So that's it. I'm looking forward to meeting with Tina and then the director of the drop-in center so that we can start planning out the the ceremony, and I hope that all of you are there in attendance. I know that you have been there in the past. And again, just going back to what happened at the supervisor level, it's it's pretty embarrassing and it's pretty sad, I'll be honest. And I think that we need people, especially elected officials and people in leadership roles, to to be bold and be brave enough to help shape history, because at one time, even the African-American citizens were marginalized and they were mistreated. And history doesn't take kindly, looking back to the people that were on the other side of those issues. We are moving forward, we're going to continue to move forward, but it's just now more than ever, the LGBTQ+ community, the trans people, the drag queens are under attack, and we need brave people to take a stance. That's what we were elected to do, and if you are in a position to do that, then please stand up, speak up, do what you can to recognize what the LGBTQ+ is facing, currently facing. Thank you.
And Councilmember Morales, do you want to report on your committees as well as your informational?
Sure. I have nothing to report on the committees. There has been no update since the last council meeting, but I'm happy to report next, our next council meeting on the committees. For the G2, first, I wanted to thank all the employees and department heads that are here. I know that you are severely understaffed, and there's a lot of changes that you have to implement, and I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. Even though we're not there, please extend to your staff that we're very grateful for all the work that they do and the quality of work that they do and how much they love the community. So I did hear, as I was coming in, Councilmember Burns saying something about a recognition. So if this is a duplicate, please, I apologize. I would like to see either an annual employee recognition event, either in the summer or winter, or anything equivalent based on what what's appropriate. Some people don't like public recognition, so it would be a combination of of something that would be worthwhile and and that would come from our employees. I do second the policy on the chemical use for our our parks or anything that we do with public works. Like to support the letter to oppose the the tax, go back, Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. And I also wanted to just acknowledge Sarah from the Community Food Bank. She has spent many hours working and coordinating a lot of collaborative agency to be able to to acquire resources, donations for the flood victims. And if you'd like to donate or volunteer your time, please contact Sarah. There's an ability for you to donate or be able to just help out in any way that you can. So I just wanted to recognize her for efforts and all the community partners that have helped out with all those efforts. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I echo the sentiments about the spraying, looking into that and possibly maybe seeking out organic alternatives. Also, there were so many. The letter for the California Cities, I would support that as well. So as far as reports, I just, a few things that I've been doing. One is I did a tour with Diane Ortiz of the Youth Alliance. I toured their facility and I met their staff, and I have to say, I was so impressed with their organization. I had no idea the number of different programs that they provide. I know they had after-school programs, but they've got leadership support, parent support groups, youth counseling and wellness, and even new parent classes. They've also got their Youth Impact Center that does drop-in support and referrals and supplies, and they even have a food pantry that the Community Food Bank has stocked for them. The staff was really phenomenal, and they were really engaged and committed to their work. And I think what was most exciting to me was meeting a staff member who had first come to Youth Alliance as a student, and now they're serving the community and the next generation of students, so that was pretty cool. So anyone who hasn't toured that facility, I would highly recommend it. I also spoke to three different social studies classes at May's Middle School. A lot of great questions from the students, and our city attorney volunteered her time to come and participate in the discussion, which was wonderful and added something, and so thank you very much. Further, I had a Zoom call with Daniel Rivkey. He is the Director of Cal State Monterey Bay's Economic Development Grants and Funding Institute for Innovation and Economic Development. It's a mouthful. I had met him at a San Benito EDC workshop. His group is interested in reaching out and partnering with the city about our goals around economic development. They do things like grant writing, and they have students that can work on various projects. So he's interested in having a future Zoom call with, maybe with the city manager, to see if there's ways we might collaborate and how they might assist us, so hopefully that'll happen. This Saturday, April 8th, I'm doing a special event called Coffee with the Mayor. It's going to be at Fourth Street Eatery from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. I am providing coffee and pastries, and people can buy specialty drinks if they choose. My special guest will be Chief of Police Carlos Renozo. This is part of my trying to meet and let get, help people get to know me, but also a commitment to engage with the community, answer questions, and be kind of open and transparent. So I I hope to do some future events, and I'll be inviting other members to participate, maybe members of council or other city staff. And to be clear, no city funds are being used for this event. And as far as any other list, the list of council requests, you know, we've talked a lot about the downtown beautification and addressing empty storefronts. Along those lines, I wanted to propose creating an ordinance for vacant buildings, which many cities have. Our code currently has something for vacant houses, but not commercial buildings. So this would allow us to address buildings that have sat empty for long periods and that are becoming rundown or as an attractive nuisance, so hopefully we can get some consensus on that. And I think, one other question I have is with regard to open positions for the city. I know we've been doing some recruiting. I'm just wondering, you know, do we have other open positions? All I'm seeing on our website is police, animal control, and recreation department. So do we have other positions open right now that we're recruiting for? And if we do, can we get them on the website?
We're in the process of putting them on. We're also working to strengthen the staff resources over there.
Yeah, okay.
As with many of our departments, those, that's a department of two.
Yeah.
And so keeping up with the current workload, and that is not only HR, that's also benefits as well, along with any of the changes you hear today with these new policies and all of that, you know, so they've, fortunately with the addition of Casey, he's taken a deep look into that. But yeah.
I appreciate that, because I just, I know a lot of people do go to the website looking to see what jobs we have, and we might get better recruitment if we are more available. So thank you, and that's all I have. So city attorney, do you have a report?
No report, mayor and council.
City manager?
If I could just, I've received consensus on some, just going through it, but not on all. So I'll start with Councilmember Burns. A recognition for Ms. Gomez's service on the Parks and Rec Committee. Additionally, through a resolution recognizing the Razorbacks, Elena Salcedo and Cole, I'm sorry, I missed the last name. I'll go back and watch it on the video. Do we have a consensus there? Councilmember Burns, you asked about administrative hearing update. The city attorney has that scheduled to come at the next meeting. Staff is working on that and has it prepared.
Thank you.
I heard quarterly employee recognition as well as annual. What I would propose is that to allow staff to come up with some ideas and bring them back. A quarterly recognition program could end up being a full-time job for the planning and all that, so I'd like to have the opportunity to have staff come back with some with some concepts. We have in the past, prior to COVID, done a few different events and started doing those in the fall last year, and so I'd like to work with staff on what we've done in the past and then bring back something more formal if if that works for everybody. We are working on getting the fund balances for the discretionary funds, and I have heard a request through the budget process to look at not only doing a more defined policy, which is what we have received direction on before, so Casey and his team are working on that. Under the guise of $50,000, we can look at $100,000 if that is the recommendation. I would, I would ask that staff be able to propose that based on the limitations of our budget or where we're at in the budget process.
our budget or where we're at in the budget process. So are we okay with, with coming back with recommendations during the budget process? And we would put together a formal policy on what, what those expenditures would look like as well, which is common practice in other municipalities. Vista Park Hill spraying, looking into that and working with our community service director to see, one, just looking into the, the incident itself, and then two, looking at our policies and if, if there are changes that are needed and bringing back an update on the item. I believe I saw at least three for a letter of opposition, probably in partnership with the league. You know, we'll reach out to the league, they usually have template letters that we'll bring back and put in front of you for, ultimately for a vote. Staff request, and, and the way the agenda's written, I'm not sure I need consensus, but it'd probably be good practice on when we do the department head or the training updates. It is agendized as training updates of staff. I think just by the nature of the chief and I sitting up here and the clerk, it tends to lead to who's sitting, but I'll work with the department heads to provide an update at that time as well. A transcription of the manual that was shown by Councilmember Resendez? And then lastly, vacant building commercial ordinance? Okay, we'll work, we'll work with our team. I, I would, you know, point out that there are quite a few ordinance changes that are on that list that staff are working on now, and so we'll, we'll, we'll put them into the, into the hopper, but there's a considerable amount that staff are working on and that we discussed also at goal setting, that we'll be looking at taking a step back and, and prioritize, not only prioritizing, but what do we feel is the cost needed to get these items over the finish line as well.
Thank you. I think the City of Watsonville had, had an ordinance to address the buildings, and in particular, the Kmart over there was, was the one that they were talking about. So you might want to look into that.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Chief Reynoso, did you have a report? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Can I just, I guess, clarify or change my request from thanking Sarah to recognizing Sarah from the food bank for all her work and Tyler stuff? If I can get, thank you consensus on that?
Chief, did you have a report for us?
Nothing to report, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, city clerk, did you have a report?
Yes, I do have, in light of our recent adoption of the, of the proclamation policy, I do have two requests for proclamations. One is from the San Benito County Water District, and they're requesting to proclaim May as Water Awareness Month in the city. This corresponds to the start of the local irrigation season. So is that one that I have consensus for? Okay. And the other is from the American Legion Auxiliary, which supports the American Legion Group, which is a wartime veteran service organization. And so they are seeking to declare May as Poppy Month and May twenty-seventh as Poppy Day, and the poppy is designated as a symbol of sacrifice of life in all wars. Do I have consensus on that as well? Okay, I'll bring those forward on the seventeenth, thank you.
So city manager, do you have any further unfinished business updates?
No, Madam Mayor, I do not.
All right, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, meeting is now adjourned.